Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council December Meeting. We will move into our meeting agenda and I will call the meeting to order. Tonight, our prayer is going to be done by Chaplain Warren from the Smyrna Police Department, and Mike Strange, our Director of Utilities, is going to do our pledge. If you'll all stand with us, please.
Let us bow. Our Father, we bow together at night to honor and to reverence your holy name, and to give you thanks for this day that you have given and blessed in our life. And we thank you for blessing us throughout all of this year. And we thank you for the council who has assembled to do the work of the city. We ask that you bless them with wisdom, give them knowledge, to lead the city of Smyrna in the way you would have it to go, that it may be an example and a beacon to others to look for, for an example. So, we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, Chaplain. Thank you, Mike. Ms. Diane, if you'll do roll call.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short. Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
We'll move on to Item 3, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the November 12th, 2019, and November 26th, 2019 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
In order, ma'am.
Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Correspondents and Communications, anything, Brian?
Nothing seen, ma'am.
Okay. We will move on to our awards and recognitions. This is a night that we're all really excited about. It is our Christmas Parade winners, and we just had the parade Sunday, and it was exciting, and the weather held out, which I was really excited about. But it was so nice to see kids and families up and down that parade route. So, for those of you who don't know, the backbone of the parade is Jill Strange, and she starts working on it probably today for next year. And she just does an amazing job. Every detail she makes sure is taken care of. So, Jill, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you. Hi, again. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for an opportunity to do this. I was thinking on the way over here, when I was a little girl, I lived in a very small town, and it was a grid of avenues and streets. And every December, it was a Sunday after Thanksgiving, that day I ran down over one block and down three, and that was the absolute hub, the kickoff of the Christmas Parade. So, as a little girl, I stood there and I watched that moment and was blown away and enamored and moved and touched, and somehow the stars aligned, and I became the woman who planned those types of things in that small town. So, I took it super seriously because I remember how that felt, running one block over and three blocks down, to see that happen. And then, as fate would have it, years, years, years later, I moved halfway across the state, and for some reason, here I am again, getting to plan parades for towns. And that nostalgia and that feeling comes with me every single time we step one off. From the very first step off, I have butterflies from the tip of my toes to the top of my head, and then as Santa passes me by, it's so emotional, and I never want to lose that because that gives you the drive to get out there and hope that people feel the way that that little girl felt, one block over and three blocks down. So, thank you for the opportunity to do that. It means so much more than I could ever, ever tell you to have the chance to stand there and be the person that plans. So, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. This year, we had the biggest parade that Smyrna has had. We had more participants and more pieces to each participation than we've ever had. And we had a food drive attached to that that went off the grid. It was crazy. Everything went bigger and better and more exciting, and we are so thankful for a chance to get here and tell you just a little bit about that today. So, what we would like to start off with is our series of awards. We offered four different categories. The Mayor's Cup, the Best Theme, the Most Creative, and the Best Christmas Spirit. And in those, for the Best Christmas Spirit, we had Smyrna Ready Mix. Is anyone here with Smyrna Ready Mix? We'd like for you guys, if I call your names and you're here, to come up and have a picture with Brian and the mayor. Brian's our town manager, and Mayor Mary Esther Reed. But we would like to say thank you to you guys. But is anybody here with Debbie's School of Dance?
Hi. Do you want Brian to do a little dance? He can dance.
Here is your certificate, and if you'll hang there with them, we would like to get your picture.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell us a little, give us your name and tell us maybe why y'all got involved in the parade?
My name is Debbie Johnson, and I'm with Debbie's School of Dance. And I've lived in Smyrna for 25 years, originally raised in Antioch, and we moved this way. And my studio is in Antioch, but I love the traditions that Smyrna has and how close everybody is. So, I wanted to get my students involved so that they could learn to give back and just be better role models for their friends. And being here in Smyrna and doing that in the parade, I think is a good step in the right direction.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. In our Most Creative category, we have Smyrna Baseball League. You guys want to come up?
Here's your certificate and your money, though.
Congratulations. We're so excited for you.
Your snowmen made out of baseballs was so cool. We'll call that right off. So, congratulations. So, tell us your name and anything you want to talk about with Smyrna Baseball.
My name is Jerry Bradley, and I'm the elected president of the league. And as far as our snowmen and our float, it was an amazing thing to me. And I have to give credit to my VP of, actually going to be the new Park Cedar Stone, Amy Call, so she can stand real quick. This whole idea was hers. As far as our involvement, as far as our involvement with the parade, you know, we wanted to do something different creative-wise, to give back to our parents, to the community of Smyrna for allowing us to be able to give to the children of Smyrna. So, with that, Amy came up with the whole, actually the whole, I mean, the whole layout. And I think this was kind of our first one that we actually put together as towards the float, and not just kind of just having just some hodgepodge thing, but really putting some time and effort in it. So, I accept this on behalf of the Smyrna Baseball League, and we look forward to even a greater thing, which we're going to do next year for the parade. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also had in our Creative category Azteca Bakery. Is anybody here from the bakery? Isn't that so sad? I just have to say for just a minute on their behalf, did you see those dancers in the parade? They were phenomenal. And he sat up the night and day before and made thousands of cookies, and they handed out handmade cookies. So, I wish they were here, and I'm sorry that they're not, but it was creative and it was phenomenal. So, if we can just give him a round of applause. It was so, so precious. Now, in our Best Use of Theme, this year, we themed the parade A Tennessee Christmas. And in that category, we had Smyrna Fast Pitch. Is anybody here from Fast Pitch? Now, they're working really hard, and I also have to say on behalf of them, they are a team that gathered hundreds and hundreds, 898 items in our food drive that we had just on their own, and they kept sending me little pictures, and they had their ball trailer, and it just kept getting fuller and fuller and fuller, and it was just the most spectacular thing. So, on behalf of them, they did a beautiful little truck, and it was adorable, and they gave a ton of food and a ton of time, and loved on us all the way through, and were super supportive. So, congratulations to Smyrna Fast Pitch. Also, we had Smyrna Parks and Recreation. Now, them being a part of our town, we're so proud of just everything they do. Mike Moss runs a phenomenal Parks and Recreation Department, and Marty and Jimmy and the crew that goes on, we could go on and on about them. But this year, they decided to step up their game and participate in the competition and created a phenomenal Rock City float to highlight their Volunteer of the Year recipients. And that's always so special. But they caught the eye of our judges as well this year, and we're so proud of them. So, I'd also like to award Smyrna Parks and Recreation with Best Use of Theme. Y'all up and up? Mr. Mike Moss, thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, who wants to do the talking?
Mine.
I was elected while we were on the back row. I looked over, and everybody's like, like this. I think there's times that a director knows to stay out of the way, and this is one of those times when we were building a float, but I got to give it to this staff. And Milton Ingram's not here. Milton worked hard. He does a lot of the woodwork on this. The brainchild is Christina Manis. I went to her a couple of years ago and asked her to start leading the design because we were trying, and it was kind of on a whim. So, she's done a great job. Andy Russell is right here. He did a lot of work on it. He's a woodworking guy, and Jimmy allowed us to use the shop and helped, and Marty too. So, we've got a lot going on down there, and throwing a float in there is not always the easiest thing, but, well, we had a good time this year.
Thank you. Congratulations. Our final category is called the Mayor's Cup, and this is Best Overall. And we had two in this category this year. The first one I would like to award is the town of Smyrna's Food Drive Float. And I turned to you, Tom Rose, because you really worked so hard in heading that up and piecing that together, and there was no part of that that could have been done without you. It was phenomenal. If y'all didn't see it, it was a big old food basket. Food was pouring out of it. Inside the basket was a bluegrass band, and there were shopping carts beside of it. It just went on and on and on, and it was extraordinary. And we are so proud of what you accomplished with the float and just the dynamic of the float, but also with the meaning behind it and pushing hard for this food drive that we try to put as a part of the parade, and everything that you did to lead and guide and direct that float. Thank you so much. So, as part of our Mayor's Cup recipients, we would like for you to come up, and we say thank you. We're so proud of you.
Was Britney Spears on the float?
Britney Spears next year.
Mark, you talking or Tom talking?
Tom.
First of all, I just want to say it certainly wasn't done by one person. We had a great group of people, almost every different department touched this float in one way or the other, early on in the year, when you first get the idea of what the theme is going to be. A lot of different people get together. We brainstorm it. We all kind of come up with what we want to do for the float. We get groups of people who go off in their own little direction and put some different pieces together for it. We gather together and spend a couple of days out there, having a lot of fun, building it, putting it together. And then, several people add to that as well, as we walk down the parade, collecting food for Nourish Food Bank. I want to thank the mayor and the council for giving us an opportunity to put this together and show the community that we, every year, that we are collecting canned food and non-perishable items for the Nourish Food Bank. This year grew a little bit more with people bringing more canned, more non-perishable items to the parade. I'm hoping that it will continue to grow year after year. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I do want to say one thing. I want to say thank you out there in TV land, people out there, because you do play an important part in our community. And I'm so blessed to be part of the community. I get to work here, I get to play here, and it's just amazing. I love it. But to see, I know, to see how y'all, we all come together, we all come together to make this happen. Thank you.
And our final recipient in our float competition is also in the Mayor's Cup category. I look into the sea of y'all. Crylike Realtors of Smyrna. They brought in the Grand Ole Opry to our live low parade, and we had Rita McIntyre, Dolly Parton, Willie Nelson, Loretta Lynn, Little Jimmy Dickens, help me, Minnie Pearl.
Patsy Cline.
Patsy Cline. Patsy Cline. We'll say again, Dolly Parton, because she was a big part of the float. She was a great big part of the float. She was. Loretta Lynn was also on the float, too. Crylike, you always bring your A's. You always step up to the challenge. And so, this year, we again honor you as some kind of a recipient. Y'all are always trying to get into every category, and we love it. Keep it coming. But we would like to say thank you and congratulations for our Mayor's Cup Award for the Grand Ole Opry themed float for the 2019 parade. So, if you all will come on up, congratulations. Amber tried to trick them. Amber's the sweet little thing in the middle right here. She tried to trick them tonight and send a text message that said that we requested them to come and cost it. And nobody bit on the text. We wish they would have, but we're so glad that you're here regardless. Tom is the spokesperson.
Well, again, just like the other gentleman said, the parade's not a parade without people. And the beauty of the parade is walking down the street and throwing out the candy and stopping and taking pictures with people. You know, the amount of little kids that are there smiling and just having a great time is one of the reasons why we continue to do it. We've been in the parade, I don't know how many years at this point. But the other reason, I think, why we continue to do it is Jill, the encouragement that she gives each year. I mean, she just pushes and pushes and encourages you, so we appreciate that. And, you know, we love the city of Smyrna, and I think just about anybody that lives in Smyrna loves the city of Smyrna. So, it's just a small way of giving back. So, thank you all.
We had so many special, new aspects of our parade this year, one of which was Stewart's Creek High School joined us for a student-led production and broadcast. It was so amazing, but I want to say a special thank you to Brian Hercules and to Kathy Farrell for orchestrating that and connecting the dots for us so that we could have a broadcast this year. And not only did we have a broadcast, we had one of the most special broadcasts we've ever had. So, thank you guys so much for your work behind the scenes on that, and on the day of, I know how hard you worked and how much it meant. It meant so much to a lot of people, and we forged great new relationships that we all hope will connect throughout the future of these parades. And so, thank you so much for that. That was very, very special. And they did a wonderful job.
Just to say, Brian and Kathy and I went out to Stewart's Creek this morning and met with Chris Bissinger and his group, and they were so excited, and they were throwing out ideas of ways to make it better for next year. And so, we are so excited for them as well. So, they really enjoyed being a part of that. And so, thanks to Dr. Harold and to Chris for all that they did to make the day possible.
And I'd remind everybody, throughout the rest of the year, up until Christmas Day, we'll be broadcasting the parade on Channel 3, which is the channel you're watching tonight. So, if you haven't had a chance, go out and take a look at it. It's pretty nice. They did a really, really nice job.
Now, the final piece of the parade for me here tonight is talking about the food drive. Years ago, five years ago, we talked about trying to get on the heels of something that Chief Culbertson mentored and started through his fire department's effort of raising food in the community. And we wanted to try to fill in the gaps or get in the cracks or whatever we could do to contribute to that as well. And we thought, why not? We've got a lot of people gathered at one time in the same place. Let's try to hit this with Chief Culbertson and have a food drive. We'll see how it goes. And in 2015, we raised 1,800 cans of food, and our heads spun off our shoulders, and we were so excited. So, then we thought, let's do it again. In 2016, we gathered 4,523 items, and again, like fireworks, my head shot off. It was amazing, and I was so excited. So, let's go again. To year three, we gathered 7,181 items, so we thought, here we go. We're going to ask for 10,000, not thinking in the world that there was a chance to do it, but we were going to try. So, in 2018, when the numbers all came in, we had 22,872 items, and I just cried like a baby. I thought, how in the world did that just happen? But it's because of all you guys and all of you guys. I had no idea what was going to happen for 2019 because I thought, what in the world do you do? 22,000, that's huge. So, what I did was, is call in the, call in the big guns, call in the troops. And I went to Brian, the mayor, the council, our parade team, Tom, all you guys, and said, you know, our goal is set at 25,000. That's astronomical. It's huge. We're going to try. So, what we do, we need to do is start challenging people, start, whatever we have to do, hit the ground running. What can we do? And really, before the words left my mouth, Brian was challenging the mayor, the mayor was accepting the challenge, the council all got challenged. It went wild. It went wild. And this group in front of me, I mean, the grind that they put into this effort was beyond anything that I could have ever imagined or asked for or hoped for. So, thank you so much for that because in 2019, with a goal set of 25,000, we hit 82,384. What do you even say, except for saying, I know why, and it's because of all of you all, and there is not one single person that didn't contribute. We brought in a truck that was pulling a trailer and at, like, at the entry gate of the parade, and the bed of the truck filled up, the trailer filled up. It was spilling over the sides, into the road, and into the park, and on the tables, and we had to come in. Then, days after, we took umpteen fire trucks to the food bank and convoy after convoy, it all got taken where it needed to go. But 82,384 items later, oh my goodness. Now, Chief, what were your numbers this year? The fourth, you exceeded your numbers also.
Dolly Parton was here.
Dolly Parton was here. Steve, you want to come sit back? Chief Culbertson and his team far exceeded your numbers this year as well, right?
40,500.
40,500, which is your biggest total to date as well. So, the good news in all that is that the town of Smyrna, with a big ol' we-love-you, I-love-you love note to the Nourish Food Bank, sent over 120,000 items to help stock their shelves so much, so they had to have more shelves to put it on. So, gosh, thank y'all. Thank you so much. There's not enough that anybody could ever say to every single person that's here and every single person that's up there, and all that you challenged and all that you did, it's beyond words. I am so appreciative, and it drives me to tears, so I'm going to dry it up before it gets that far because I'm an ugly crier. So, thank you so, so much. But with that, we do an individual grouping, a traveling trophy that says who, what individual group gathered the most that particular time. And Crylike Realtor has all four plates so far since we started doing this traveling trophy, and they again this year brought in the number that, that it blew my mind. I'm pulling it up, 22,881 items themselves. They went together, and they were cooking chili, they were dressing up, they were talking to people, whatever you could think to do. I mean, I, some people might still be tied up waiting for their food. Almost 23,000 items, guys. Thank you so much. So, I would like to award you, for the fourth time running, Traveling Trophy. It has its spot, it's coming home. Thank you if you all will accept this and have your picture made. We just certainly appreciate everything you've done. Thank you so much, and Nourish Food Bank, thanks you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. If you can stick around for me for just a minute. Okay. Like I said, throughout the food drive, we did lots of challenges, lots of competitions and things like that, and I have to recognize three more people, and that is Mary Esther Reed, Brian Hercules, and Raquel Peebles. We had people that, it didn't matter to us if they brought one can or 10,000 cans or 20,000. I mean, we love what you did, we love what you did, but if everybody participated, that was the point, because it was all doing something amazing. But I have to just say to the three of you, Mary Esther Reed was responsible for bringing in 12,822 items. So, thank you. That's phenomenal. And Brian was responsible for bringing in 13,662. Wait, timeout before you move on to this. Hold on, timeout. We're going to go right back there. Hold on. And.
Oh, wait, we have 1,000 in the back.
Does anybody want to donate to Mary Esther Reed? No, we're done. And Raquel. Raquel Peebles brought in, are you ready, 16,478. I, can you come down and get with, we're going to do, just to congratulate the people who reached an over 10,000 mark, and that is incredible. The grind you all showed in that is incredible. Thank you so, so much. So, guys, this is our over 10,000 group in addition to our Crylike Realtors, but thank you so much, guys. Now, I promised, I sent a little final paragraph in my final email, and it says, "The town manager challenged Mary Esther Reed. Please tune into the town council meeting on December 10th, 5:00 p.m. to see who is crowned king or queen food drive challenge, Mary Esther Reed or Brian Hercules. I am sure the loser won't mind crowning the winner." So, I need to go over two more numbers one more time. Mary Esther Reed brought in 12,822 items, and Brian brought in 13,662 items, making Brian the 2019 king of the Smyr, uh, king of the food drive challenge. So, Brian, Mary Esther, I'll let you take it from here. As much as I hate losing, as much as I hate losing, I will take pleasure in crowning you the king of the food drive.
And as much fun as we have had doing this, I cannot tell you how much fun. The winner in this are the citizens of the town of Smyrna. Those ones that might just need a little bit of help, you know, just to make it to that next paycheck. And to those boys and girls who are hungry at night. And we have laughed and we joked and we've sent emails and sent texts and sent pictures of when we've brought food in. And everybody got behind us. But I think every person would say, we did not ask somebody who said no. Everybody said yes. And sometimes it was just two cans. But that's okay. And then the town got behind it. And they were starting to post things on Facebook and getting so excited. But when Mark talked about it and Tom talked about it, and Tom talked about it as well, that's what makes living in the town of Smyrna so wonderful, is we know it's about neighbor helping neighbor. And I think it will continue to grow. We've got a number to beat next year of over 80,000. So Cry Like, you better, y'all go have to help us out because we all are committed and I know that the town is. So I bow to you. You need the hat on, the crown on. But wait, the beanie weenies have to go on the front. I did have tuna fish, but it smelled tuna. So we took that one off.
King weenie.
There you go. Thank you all so much.
So with all that, I say thank you again for the opportunity to work with you guys. There's no one better. I've done a lot of parades in my lifetime. And honestly, there's nobody better to work with in the town of Smyrna. So thank you for letting me serve you, serve alongside you, and serve the community. I've had the best time. So we wrap the 2019 parade. Look forward to 2020. And that'll be on December 6 at 2:00 p.m. So save the date. Thank you so much. Thank all of you guys so much. You mean the world to me. You have no idea. And thanks for letting me be here.
Thank you.
Thanks. You all can see why Jill is so important to this parade and to this community. And Jill, we can't say thank you enough for all that you do, the number of hours and emails and texts that she sends out to make sure that it's easy for all of us and that the citizens and the parade participants are the ones who benefit. And it's always a great parade. So thanks, Jill. Okay.
I don't know if anybody, when they came up to get their picture made, may have left a pair of glasses up here. If so, they're up here.
And you know what? That could have been from earlier today when we were making the pictures.
It might have been. I just saw them.
Yeah. Okay. We will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda, and let me say this, y'all are welcome to stay if you want to stay. But if you do not want to stay for the meeting, you are more than welcome to go home, have dinner, or go home and watch us on TV.
I didn't know if I could take my crown and go.
So we will move on to our consent agenda. And our consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine. I always like to read the items that are on the consent agenda. So the public and the people that are here in the audience know exactly what we're voting on. If there's an item that a council member would like to pull off and vote on individually, we can do that. Consent agenda item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding to use, for use of the town event center relative to a mass medical emergency by TriStar Stonecrest. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with energy land and infrastructure relative to Old Jefferson Pike Drainage Design Project. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number one with boatman construction relative to the Taylor Farms Sewer Upgrade Project. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Parker Hanafin relative to the maintenance for the THM analyzer at the water treatment plant. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Laverne relative to the placing of the gas AMI connected grid routers on two poles plus installation of additional poles. Item F is approval of the adoption of the revised employee handbook. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Cigna relative to third-party administrator, provider network, and reinsurance stop loss for the town's health insurance plan. And the last one is item H, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Info Armor relative to the fraud and identity protection services for employees. Is there an item that council would like to pull off and talk about individually? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business. And tonight we have seven public hearings. And our first public hearing is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 15.15. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the plan of services for the annexation, which is the next item on your agenda. This is a relatively standard document that puts in writing all the services the town will provide to the property on the effective day of the annexation. This would be all services in this area except for water, which will be provided by a consolidated utility district. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval.
Questions on this item? Seeing, having no questions for Kevin, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Abstaining.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item B is the public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 15.15, containing approximately 19.76 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of David P. and Gail Mohasky. And the property is located at 8964 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. This is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is for the annexation of this tract of land. It is, one single tract of land totaling 19.76 acres. Land use plan would support medium-density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and the Westover PRD in town and then RM in Rutherford County. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel that we would be annexing, as well as a driveway and access easement that provides access to three additional houses that are on separate parcels that are not part of the annexation request. This would create an island of the county containing two parcels, but that's kind of the only, only way we could annex this tract. So the planning commission did recommend approval of this request.
Questions for Kevin on this? Having no questions for Kevin, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you will come forward, if you'll just state your name, your address, and then you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Michael Murphy, 8956 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. I don't know if I heard, Kevin, did he say the right-of-way was not part of the annexation?
It is part, it is part of the annexation, just the tracks of land that is served.
It's my understanding that, I got two issues. One is the right-of-way, and the other one is some false information that's been given to the planning commission, as well as this committee here too, concerning this right-of-way. I talked to Mr. Hercules on the 15th of November. He told me Mr. Collins had contacted him and told him that the right-of-way was not going to be in the equation of this annexation. He was taking out. It would be, it would continue being a little country gravel road like it is right now. So that's what I was told on November 15th by Mr. Hercules. The other residents out there, Josh Britton, he got an email from Mr. Riggsby stating same thing, that it was not part of this annexation right-of-way. And so the second issue is that when this thing was presented to the planning commission, as well as this body, it was conveyed to y'all and them that they were working with the residents out there to resolve this issue. I don't know who "they" is. If "they" is Mr. Collins, he has not contacted one individual out there of the residents about this right-of-way, unless he sent it up through a smoke signal, carry a pigeon, or we did not get any contact at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against this item? Then I will close the public hearing. And, oh, did you want to speak?
Well, I, um...
If you'll state your name and address for me.
That's right. Sean Collins at 8286 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. And I just wanted to help out with some clarity there. I respect all my neighbors and I appreciate, and of course, I have communicated with Josh, one of the other members, and also the seller of the property that lives at 8964 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. And my engineer, Rob Mulchin, is here with SEC. And we met with Kevin Riggsby at the very beginning to talk over this project. And we understood that a change of addresses might be required for the, if, if we ended up using the easement, then that would put us in a situation in which I would, we might need to ask the people that live back there, the four homes, or three of the, that their address may change. So the, the decision that we came up with was to, in fact, leave the easement as it is and not affect the neighbors adversely. And so I just wanted to try to provide some clarity there. This would not affect the neighbors in that.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against this? If you will state your name, your address, and if you're with any group.
Yes. Your name, Rob Mulchin, SEC. On behalf of Mr. Collins, the discussion regards of this property is this property has a, more or less, an access easement that runs through it that allows access to the four parcels, three of which are not involved with tonight's rezoning on that side. So the easement itself, although we're changing the zoning of the property in which the easement's on, we're not changing the use of the easement that goes along with that, with this property that's being rezoned tonight. So the easement will stay as it has been and as will be in perpetuity along with the property. It's just that we're changing the zoning classification on that side. So any development that we've talked about doing on the property after we get past this rezoning point, the easement and the driveway that goes back to these four parcels will stay the same as it is today. So we aren't changing any means of ingress, egress, any four of those parcels, you know, the existing parcel and the adjacent three parcels that are involved with this easement. So any development that we're planning to do, we're going to plan on doing it as a separate access point onto the property and not utilizing their access easement to get to their homes on that side. So that's where we're, I think that maybe where some of the confusion is, is that, you know, that we are rezoning the property, but we are not dissolving the easement that these people are using to get to their homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ma'am, could I just speak?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You get three minutes and that's it. Anyone else to speak for or against this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Kevin, can you come back up and give us a little explanation?
Yeah, the easement that they're talking about is basically along the southern border of this track.
Which, tell us, show us where on the map.
About right here. It kind of comes in here and it comes along. And then it serves houses on these four tracks here.
Which are not part of the city.
Well, three of them are not. One of them that is served by that is part, is the Mohasky residents. It's part of the annexation.
And just so they know, we cannot annex them unless they choose to be annexed. So I don't want anybody to think that.
Yeah, we are only annexing the one tract of land that's been requested of us. The easement is being, is a part of the annexation and zoning. It's because it's on the tract of land that, that has been requested. However, it is not, of course, we don't have development plans yet. But it's my understanding that Mr. Mulchin and Mr. Collins said that they would not be utilizing that easement for anything when they bring a development plan to us, when it goes back to the planning commission for a subdivision plot. So that the easement would remain exactly as it is today. Four people can continue to use it and from here on out in perpetuity as a gravel driveway. And then the development of the internal track will be separate from that easement. So...
Would you all recommend that we put that in our motion just so that, or no?
I don't think on a zoning like this...
It's described on the plaque as a, as an easement.
I mean, the easement is there. They can't eliminate the easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
It goes with the deed, doesn't it?
Yes.
Right. It's just ingress, egress. And it'd be between the property owners as long as it wasn't dedicated to the, to the city as a public easement at some point where we'd be in a tussle with it. But we're not at that stage at this point.
It's a private easement between those four owners.
But to give up that, then all four owners would have to...
Right. They would all have to agree. Right.
Okay. Other questions of Kevin on this?
So the easements preserve, anybody that utilizes this will continue to be able to utilize it in the state it's in and have access to and from their properties?
Correct.
Okay.
Easement would show up on all four deeds actually, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
This is completely between, I know that you're concerned because someone's asked about it. But this is really not a city issue. This would be the two private property owner issues. Annexation would not change the use of that ingress and egress.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff or Kevin? Do we have a motion?
I'll move we approve the annexation request.
A motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second him.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item C is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 19-61 relative to the annexation R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 15.15. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is a public hearing, which is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34, parcel 23.00, containing approximately four tenths of an acre. It's requested by Cora Theo Alfaro to go from I3 to I1. The property is located on Wade Harrod Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a piece of property that is on Wade Harrod Road. It's on kind of the western end of Wade Harrod Road. There's kind of two, three separate segments of Wade Harrod Road in town. This is about 1,350 feet west of Sam Griffin Road. The land use plan would support heavy industrial development here in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of I3 as well as I1, which was just actually changed last month. The primary motivation for this request is that I3 does have the most restrictive building setbacks in the zoning ordinance, 100 feet on the front and 50 feet on the side and rear. Minimum setbacks on I1 are 30 feet on the front, 20 foot side, and 25 foot rear. This tract of land is pretty small. 100-foot and 50-foot setbacks would make development impossible. And so they have requested this change primarily for that reason. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 49, parcel 2.00 and 2.02, containing approximately 3.03 acres. It's requested by Abu Ishak, and it's to go from R1 to PRD. The property is located on Old Nashville Highway, and it is a second reading.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request to go from R1 to APRD. It's on Old Nashville Highway. It's about 600 feet northwest of the intersection with Pioneer Drive. The land use plan would support commercial development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and the Villas of Stewart's... a mix of R-one and the Villas of Stewart'sboro PRD. This proposed PRD is for a thirty-five unit townhouse development. It would be phase two of the Villas of Stewart'sboro, which as the state is, is adjacent, is under development right currently with thirty-eight units proposed. Access would utilize Longfellow Lane, which is a private road that is a part of phase one, not, and, you know, additional access to Old Nashville Highway. I did attach the pattern book and everything that went with that with regards to the layout utilities, et cetera. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, with the condition that the HOA would be managed by a third party.
Kevin, on the back of this property, help me understand or remember what we did to help buffer that R-one. Was there a fence involved?
Um, I don't remember if there was a fence. There is a.
Right here it says six.
There is a fifteen foot wide. It would be a type C buffer, which is our, not our most.
Landscape.
Largest buffer. We did talk about that first reading, about adding as a part, when this comes back to the planning commission for site plan review, that we would look at, reviewing that with a, an adding of fence as a part of that buffer in addition to the landscape in there. Yeah.
Okay.
That is something, one of the adjoining property owners did contact me. I think you may have talked to Councilman Short as well about, as a request, a, a privacy fence, which when phase one was approved ten years or so ago, there was a privacy fence required on, on one of the.
That was on the church side, was it?
On the church side of phase one, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was noticing. It's still there, six foot privacy fence. It's still on the site plan.
I agree. I think that would help.
Yeah.
Buffer that. Okay. Any other questions for Kevin or comments?
Have you heard for, about the third party management?
I have not. That was a condition of their approval, so they'll have to, they'll have to do that. But they, they, they didn't ask me that question or talk to me at all about it since that time. So.
Other questions for Kevin? Seeing no other questions, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
We will make sure that the discussion at site comes in with, with the fence.
Great.
Site plan. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
The HOA's in from planning, so we don't have to include it in our motion. Is that right?
That's already a condition.
As time goes by, who makes sure that there is a HOA involved?
Well, I mean, as part of the, once they get the development part of the process, you know, when they build their detention pods and all these amenities and all that, they have to set that up. And we make sure that those are set up. We make sure that there's a, a, a management company of whoever they use. We don't really care who they use, but that those get set up as part of that, really before they get, we sign off on the final COs and all that kind of stuff.
Eventually falls to the homeowners, correct?
Eventually falls to the homeowners. We make sure it's there at the beginning, certainly. And obviously, we make sure they, through codes and everything else, to make sure that they, obviously, maintain their property and all, all of that. But, but eventually it does fall to the homeowners. We just make sure it's done in the beginning. That's all we can really, certainly.
It is third party anyway, right? It's third party.
If it, right. It's managed by a third party, which helps.
So, the home, the people occupying the properties will obviously be paying HOA fees to support a third party HOA. Probably be there a while.
Other questions? We've got a motion in a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item F is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map twenty-seven P, Group B, parcel eighteen point zero one, containing approximately forty-two one hundredths of an acre. It's requested by Ann Gannon to go from R-two with an H-one to C-four with an H-one, and the property's located at one oh two Hazelwood Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request at one oh two Hazelwood Drive. It's about a hundred and twenty feet southeast of the intersection with College Street. Land use plan would support downtown mixed-use development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R-one, R-two, C-one, and C-two. This would be a, a change from R-two to a C-four. It would, would remain within the historic district. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Seeing no questions, we will go to the public to see if anyone's here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
I'll, I'll second Tim's move.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I did move.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map twenty-eight M, Group G, parcels twenty-three point zero zero and twenty-four point zero zero, containing approximately forty-nine one hundredths of an acre and fifty-six one hundredths of an acre respectively. It's requested by Maggie Johnson and Frank Richardson to go from R-two to C-four. The properties are located on Enin Springs Road West, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, these are two separate tracts of land that came in together for rezoning requests. They're, they're located approximately four hundred feet east of Old Nashville Highway and Long Enin Springs Road West. A land use plan would support commercial development here in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R-two and C-four. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Seeing no questions, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, do we have a motion? Oh, I'll close the public hearing, go to the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public, our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to adding language to the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title Fifteen Motor Vehicles Traffic and Parking, specifically adding a new chapter eight pertaining to dockless small vehicle systems. This is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as we've discussed before, this would prohibit dockless small vehicle systems or dockless small vehicles, which are described as, as short-term rentals from point to point, and if you have bicycles, scooters, electric bicycles and such, sort of what we've all viewed with the issues that they, they experienced in Nashville. And Brentwood and Franklin have also dealt with similar ordinance as this. And this is just being proactive to prohibit the problem before it becomes a problem.
Questions for Jeff on this? Seeing no questions, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item eight, which is our new business, Planning Commission report. We only have one item tonight. That's rare. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and C-two zoning with the Enin Springs Gateway Overlay District, a property located on tax map thirty-three, parcel sixty-two point zero one, containing approximately three point eight seven acres. It's requested by Camden Properties LLC. The property's located at thirty-seven sixty Rocky Fork Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a track of land that is just west of I-twenty-four along Rocky Fork Road. A land use plan would support commercial development here. This area does currently lie within COD service area, but that is, may be changing soon based on your agenda item further down, down in, in your agenda. This parcel is not contiguous with the current city limits. There was another request for annexation for an adjacent property, which was withdrawn at the planning commission, that would have made this property contiguous. Without the annexation of that property, annexation of this property would be either non-contiguous or would require annexation of a large portion of I-twenty-four right-of-way to make it contiguous. It is to ask opinion that neither option is practical, and we recommend to the, recommended to the planning commission that this property not be annexed at this time. And so, the planning commission did recommend denial of this request.
Questions for Kevin?
Well, one of the things we're really trying to do is protect this corridor as best we can for the Rocky Fork interchange that we've talked about forever. And now there's a lot of concerted effort coming from the mayors and the municipalities on the, on the Franklin Brentwood side of things that are bringing everybody to the table, as you well know, to, to try to make that a, a regional interchange. And so, this little triangle right here, just didn't make sense to annex it by itself. We had an annexation request, as Kevin mentioned, that came in alongside of it. And just for those, probably same reasons, we, we want to be sure we know what we're looking at here at this interchange before we start building that interchange out. So.
Well, I think we've talked about, we only get one shot at this, and this will probably be the last interchange.
For us.
For us. And so, I would hate to do anything that we look back on and more councils in the future look back on and say, what the heck were you guys doing? So, I think we have to think long and hard about everything that's around that area. Yeah. Questions or comments for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve and deny.
So, do we lose?
I'm, I'm, I'm moving to.
Deny.
Deny, yes. That's what recommended by the planning.
Okay. So, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a motion in a second to deny. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second to deny. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item B is a package liquor board report. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is consideration of a resolution to update the Town of Smyr, Town of Smyrna social media policy. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the town does currently have a social media policy in conjunction with Kathy Farrell. She started working with us now. It was a good time to look at improvements to that policy, and I believe that we did that, and this is the policy that we put before you.
Questions about anything on the policy? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ooh, is everybody asleep? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the formal adoption of the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you may remember, about two and a half years ago, TDOT sent out a letter to all municipalities, had fifty or more, more employees in, within their, employed in their municipality, and it required them to take part and put together both a, designate an ADA coordinator and put together a grievance policy. We established that a couple of years ago, and the next step was to put together an ADA transition plan and self-evaluation, where we go in through the town and determine any items in the right-of-way, in public parks or public buildings that need any ADA upgrades. We completed that, and now we're coming to the council, asking for formal adoption of the ADA self-evaluation transition plan and submit it to the state of Tennessee, to TDOT, to maintain compliance with them.
And just so everybody understands, we are mandated to have to do this. And can you just refresh our memory how much, when they came in, so the public knows how much we're talking to the tune of?
Total in the project in today's dollar amount is twenty-three million dollars.
How much?
Twenty-three million dollars.
Twenty-three million. And communities across the state are having, all communities are having to look at doing this. And so, it's not something that we have to do in next budget year.
No.
It, but it's something that we're going to have to incrementally be doing. So, I want everybody to understand what's being put on us. Not saying that it doesn't need to be done, but I just want you all to understand what the town is having to do. Anything else you want to add?
No, ma'am.
Council, any questions or comments?
Tom, once the plan is submitted, how long is the approval process?
My understanding from TDOT, there is no formal approval on it. They just accept the document that you submit to them.
Okay. And I know we talked a little bit about implementation. Is there a, is there a span of time that is expected to be implemented by, or what do we have there?
Our recommendation is to complete everything found in the self-evaluation within a thirty-year timeframe. That's consistent with what other communities within our area are doing as well. They're looking at about the same cost per citizen as well, and so they're looking at about a thirty-year timeframe.
What you have to understand is we're having to do everything that wasn't done, but then going forward, we have to make sure all of those things are also done as well. So.
Question?
Sure.
You know, when I first got here on the council back in the early nineties, we had to implement an ADA, laugh at me, Mayor, go ahead.
They started it.
We had to implement a, an ADA plan back then. And of course, now, in, in the time since then, it's grown exponentially. I mean, are we going to see more of that? I mean, do you, do you feel like that it's still going to continue to, to, to get to be a bigger and bigger and more and more costly plan?
Yeah, I, as you mentioned, it did start many years ago, even before nineteen ninety-one, with, I think it was the ABA, Architectural Barriers Act back in nineteen sixty-seven. So, I can see that there will be incremental changes to it. What they are at this time, I certainly don't know, but I can, I, so far, this seems like there has been an evolution of ADA, and I'm sure as technology advances, we'll see other advancements as well.
But I think one of the things we have to consider is, even as early as in the sixties, when this plan was put in place, there was not a lot of teeth in the program to make people utilize some of the ADA compliance. And I think what's happening now is they're getting very serious. And the teeth in this program is, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, as Tom and I talked about this, TDOT is at a point where they're saying going forward, they're going to restrict funding for any community that does not have an ADA compliance plan in place. So, we've gone through the exercise of putting the plan in place, and now what we'll do is every year, we'll look inside of our budget and look at all of our different departments to implement pieces of it along the way over the next twenty-five or thirty years. So, it is, it's a big number. There's a lot of work to be done, but some of the work can be done in some simple fixes each year. And then what we will look to do is continue as we do with our roads, some of those kind of things. As areas develop, we'll make sure that we're coming into compliance with those areas. So, I think from a long-term plan, it's just, I think the, what's happened is, is there's more focus on implementation than there has been in the past at HG, as far as why we're seeing what we see today.
Tom, in looking at this, the appendix portion, when we were at the workshop, I had asked you a couple of questions about some of the timelines that weren't actually included. Could I get an update of that? Because it's not on this one. The appendix part, where you were having some numbers, and you said that you actually had it, had it completed.
Okay.
But it just wasn't part of what you hear.
Let me send that out.
Anything else? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to an appointment of one member to the Arts Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-one. Only had one application, Diane Hague, and, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then, since we only have one application and one position to fill, all in favor of Diana Hague, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Diana. Item F is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Greenway of Nashville relative to the Zama Park construction. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, we discussed the Zama Park construction bids at the last workshop, and we were reviewing bids along with Reagan Smith, who's engineers of the project. During that time, I did call around for the references that was given to me from Greenway of Nashville, and they were all very good references. So, I don't know if they prepped them for my call or what, but they were, they were excellent. And I appreciate that they gave me so many. And I, I actually got in touch with all of them. Reagan Smith also submitted a recommendation letter, which is included in your packet, to approve. to approve Greenway of Nashville for the project at five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. I did talk to Greenway several times last week and also today about some of the plant materials, some of the things that they're going to do, and they're excited about the project. They feel like it's kind of a trophy project for them, right in the heart of the Depot District and the town of Smyrna. It is a hundred and fifty day project, and you'll be adding weather on top of that. Of course, the scope of work is sidewalks, stained concrete, oriental type plants and materials in there, trellis and small shelter for the area. So as you well know, it ties in to what we're doing downtown, and I'm excited about it just because it's in the heart of the town. Definitely going to clean up that area and also give a service to the people who may want a cup of coffee or ice cream, whatever, give them a place to go. So our recommendation is to approve the contract with Greenway of Nashville.
Questions for Mike on this?
I'm excited about the project as well, and I think Mayor Endo and his council are as well. We've kind of Facebooked back and forth a little bit, and so he's excited.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. As a side note, Brian, I know that they had sent us an email about wanting to participate. Are we working on it?
We're working on that.
I know that there's a lot of red tape with that.
Well, yeah, they have offered to send some trees over that ornate to their area, and we're working on just making sure that those trees would actually survive and accept the temperature difference and those kind of things. And then we've got to work through what it takes to actually move those trees from Japan to the US, so.
To here, right.
Through customs and those kind of things. So Mike and I are, I should say, Mike is working on that for me, so I delegated.
If it can happen, I think it would be a great thing. I will tell you how excited they were to show us the tulip poplars, the two tulip poplars that were right outside of their city hall, and they were huge now, and they were so proud of those. So it sure would be nice if we can make that work. Okay, item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an interlocal water service boundary agreement with Consolidated Utility District. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. So we discussed this at the workshop in the meeting prior. This is the bigger picture for that area. We had recently done the Woodpoint and Buckingham Hills section where we swapped with CUD. This is, this is bigger picture here. Mr. Peach has reviewed the agreement that CUD wrote and has forwarded to you guys. You guys do have the map. Sections A, B, and C would go to CUD, and Smyrna would receive Section D. Within this, a lot of this had to do with fire flow. CUD couldn't serve Section D, and it would cost quite a bit of money to them and to the developers to be able to serve that with fire flow. The only thing that has changed since the workshop is Section C. Upon execution of the agreement, now these will, customers will be transferred no later than March thirty-first. We'll have to get together a lot of customer data and line sizes, GIS data and stuff to present to CUD. So we've got a little time before that is transferred until we can get all that data, but nothing else has changed since the workshop.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? I think we talked quite a bit about it during the workshop and worked out any questions we had, so. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Anything else under other tonight, Brian?
No, ma'am.
Okay, status reports? Anything?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Diane, any announcements from you tonight?
I have nothing.
Brian, anything from you?
Ms. Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things. Want to remind everybody that Town Hall offices will be closed Tuesday and Wednesday, December the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, in observance of the holidays, and then again on Wednesday, January the first, for the New Year's holidays. So I just want to remind everybody those days of closure for the office. Couple of other things, very quickly. Did receive a letter today to the mayor, and the mayor's asked me to send these congratulations, and it's something for us to be very proud of and show some respect for our library. But Ms. Ginger Graves with the Smyrna Public Library recently graduated from the Tennessee Public Library Management Program. This is a significant milestone for Ms. Graves and for our community, and we applaud her efforts to go out and take care of this. I do have a couple of things that I want to share with you. One is a little bit of bad news in that on Nolan Drive, we have been asked by the contractor and by the CI to consider closing that project down at current stage over the winter months. We are at base rock stage, and what's happened is, is with all the rain that we had, October and November, and now it appears we're going to have some in December, they can't get the base stone compressed enough and get the water out. So what they'd like to do is close that project down. They're going to repave the stone areas coming into Nolan Drive there behind the Stars and Strike at the entrance of the SOAC, and then at the entrance of San Rebbe Parkway. We'll suspend that project for about sixty days and get through the winter months. Jones Brothers, who is the contractor, will continue to be working in our town. If we do see a window of dryness, that we can get that property dried out and get the trucks in there and get it firmed up so that we can put asphalt down, we will go with that. But it looks like probably somewhere, second week of March will be the first opportunity we have to get in there and get that taken care of. They still will have some liquidated damages that, to the tune of about five hundred dollars a day. We will suspend that during this time, but we'll pick that back up starting the date that they go back to work. They are at the end of the contract now, within about a five-day window, so no matter what happens, there will be some liquidated damages, and they understand that. We hate that we're having to do this, but just the weather was not cooperating for us to get that project done. So it'll be a little bit of inconvenience over the next couple of months as we work through this, but at the end of the day, we will have a better project. If we were to go out there and put the base stone or the base coat down and try to pave this, five years from now, that road is going to come apart on us. It's in our best interest from the town's perspective. We've talked with Charles and with Tom here locally, worked with our CI, Barge Warner, or Barge, I'm sorry, Barge, yeah, I remember it's the Barge Warner Company, but Barge, they are in agreements with this, and I think it's the best thing we can do to make sure we get a quality project out there. So Jones Brothers will still be in town, working on Enan Springs West, and the reason we can continue there, that project's a whole different level as far as where they're at within the construction phase. We're at the end of this one, and that's the problem. So anyway, I just wanted to share that information. Happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
You and I had discussion about this, and as much as we hate it, I'd much rather come out with a really good product than to rush it sixty days and not come out with a quality product over the next couple of years. Is there any way to let the businesses along that area just know what we're doing?
Yeah, we can. I've been, you know, really, we're the most impacted because the town center is in the middle of that, but yes, we'll be happy to.
But I think sometimes communication just helps.
Yes, ma'am, we will take care of that. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, I received a letter today through our email, and it's one of congratulations to the town of Smyrna and great gratitude to the town of Smyrna, but I want to keep the gentleman's name in confidence, but on February fourteenth of this year, he was, his home was severely damaged by fire. The day, that day, he said the police and the fire department kept the news and many general population out of the area so that they could recoup and try to save and salvage as much as they could of their home. Later on, they tirelessly took everything they could out of the home. Later in the year, his general contractor met with our codes inspector, Gary Reinhardt. He said, "I always believed the hard work of Gary improved my home. I think his efforts protected me and the town in having, in having a well-built home at his address." I don't know who else had a part in it this year, but overall, the town of Smyrna is tops in my books, and he just wanted to show appreciation for all the work, and pretty tragic times for him and his family to come through. So he did want to share that and show appreciation to our fire department, our police department, and our codes department. Last thing I have tonight is, I did want to share with you, we have a couple of employees that are having some pretty serious issues with their family right now, that I know they would covered our prayers and thoughts during, especially this season of the holidays. But Jenny Davis, her father passed away this past week, works in our treasury department, and her husband is scheduled to have heart surgery next week on Monday, I believe. So that family is dealing with a lot of things. Also Christina Barrett, who works in our court clerk's office, father passed away, no, I'm sorry, her father is scheduled to have, had a heart attack, and is scheduled to have heart surgery tomorrow, and I know that they, again, would appreciate our prayers at this time. And we do have a couple of employees that will remain anonymous that have ongoing serious health issues, and I think it's a good time for us to continue to think about them and show support through our prayer efforts. That's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff?
Nothing.
Raquel?
First, I'd like to thank all of the people that I challenged for the Nurse Food Bank food drive. I wasn't aware of that actual number until you said it today, so I'm very thankful to everyone who stepped up to the challenge and participated. And as you, as Brian and Mary, I should both said, the town is the winner in all of this. So I'm very excited about the numbers and glad to have been a part of it.
I don't understand why Raquel doesn't get to wear the crown.
I'm very happy to give her the crown.
I was kind of thinking that myself.
I'm very, would you like for me to crown her tonight?
I thought that was between the two of them.
I'm really disappointed you're not wearing the crown right now.
I tried to.
Or the sash.
I tried to, and I couldn't accommodate working on my computer during this meeting to make my notes.
Your computer's down. I think you should have it on right now.
Shut her down.
I think you should have it on.
The smell of beanie winnie.
I think, I think that's a thought, it's not your best.
He's advocating.
I'm sorry, I opened all that back up.
Thanks, HG.
Thank you, HG, I appreciate that.
Also, last week, we had the town of Smyrna employee Christmas luncheon, and I just thought it was a great event, and I want to thank Brian, you and your staff, for the information that you shared with us. It was phenomenal to hear how each of the departments, how the work that they do each and every day, Brian had quantified, and to hear those numbers, I think, was really important and eye-opening for all of us, for all the employees to know that, how hard their efforts go into the work that they do every day, and I just am thankful that you did that. I thought it was, it was an excellent presentation, and I hope that everybody had a good luncheon and enjoyed that experience. Also, condolences to Jenny Davis and Christine Bear. We'll keep her in our prayers as well as her father had surgery. And lastly, I would like to ask everyone, our office, my office, which is located here on Enan Springs Road, is having a toy drive. Every year, we have a Christmas open house where we donate to CASA of Rutherford County. CASA is an organization in which the court appoints court-appointed special advocates on behalf of children that are in foster care. And so for the holiday season, we collect unwrapped toys in order to give them to those children in Rutherford County that are away from home and having to be in foster care during this time of year. So if anyone would like to, we would love to be able to take a donation of toys at my law office, and the address is three thirteen Enan Springs Road, Smyrna, Tennessee. We would love to have any type of toys. We collect for babies all the way up to children that are seventeen. So those would be my announcements.
Raquel, they'll take check donations as well?
We also take check donations as well.
Great. Thanks, Raquel. HG?
Although I didn't attend the Christmas downtown over the weekend, my kids and grandkids did, and they really had a good time, and, you know, we party well in Smyrna. We do a good job with that, and keeping the family event angle to it is very important. And, you know, it's one of those things that was kind of referred to tonight that makes Smyrna special and makes it a great place to live. My daughter just moved back to Smyrna, and I just, I'm just tickled pink about that, you know, with the two grandkids close by, and to be able to go to these events. And we were at the SOAC after the parade last week, and they enjoyed it. I mean, it's an attractive place to live, and we all do this together. We all do this together. I think we meet again before Christmas, so I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, but do be safe traveling. There's a lot of folks on the road, and happy shopping, and please shop local. Thank you.
Tim?
Just to add to HG and Raquel, the Christmas parade, what a tremendous outpouring from the community and also from our employees to make it happen. And to Jill Strange, thank you, it's not enough. You can tell from how passionate she was when she was speaking about it tonight, and she does it with a heart bigger than I have ever seen. So thank you, Jill.
Steve?
Not much to add that hasn't already been spoken. Prayer requests, still keep those in our minds. And I definitely echo the work that Jill put into the Christmas parade. You know, until I was elected in 2016, the Christmas parade, I was usually sitting in my dad's shop, which is on Lowry Street, and would send my kids out into the road to get candy. So I saw it from the other side a lot of years.
Wait, the candy was for you?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I was eating as much as I could, and I was really hoping it would be something other than Tootsie Rolls, but we just kept getting Tootsie Rolls. Anyway, need to work on that for next year, Randy.
I think we have more than Tootsie Rolls.
I wasn't here. I wasn't here. You do it the year I'm not there?
It's all by design.
Aw, man.
I would love to laugh and tap.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I like the banana. Was there yellow?
Yes.
Okay, well, anyway, so it's been good, it's been, I guess, eye-opening, and it's actually one of the things that I enjoy. We kind of joke about the Christmas parade, a lot of times it's wet or cold or windy. The last couple of years, the weather's been nice, and I actually enjoy it. I think it's fun. I really...
We have a lot of, as far as the weather this year.
Yeah, I enjoy driving down the street and seeing all of the citizens and the kids smile when you walk over and hand them a candy cane, and so I really appreciate what Jill's done. She is definitely adding that small-town feel to the town because of her work, so make sure, I think she might have already gone, make sure she hears it. That's all.
Thanks.
Just to echo what's already been said for the most part, the Christmas parade was a lot of fun. Sean and Susan, we saw you out there by the railroad tracks catching candy, and there was a ton of people there, and I don't know who else gave out candy besides us, but I know it was a lot. So we enjoyed that, it's always fun for us, too. So thank all the citizens that came out, supported the parade and the canned food drive during the parade. I mean, they took the time and the trouble to remember to bring that and load down the vehicles and the trailers to the point that they just couldn't hold anymore. So that's a blessing to be able to live in a town that supports people in that way. Kudos to Jill. Mike, I know she's left, but tell her she got up here and thanked us. I don't know about that. We should be, you know, just blessing thankful for her, because the work she puts in, it's all, it's all her heart. She talked about one block over and three blocks down. Well, she's kind of moved up. You know, this is not one block over and three blocks down anymore. She's covering half of our drag in town and doing a wonderful job with it. So thank you to her, and Mike, you too, I know you were out there. Everybody that participated, it was a great event. We appreciate all of you for doing it. Raquel started off by mentioning the employee luncheon, and, you know, we're pretty fortunate, Brian, as our town manager and the staff and the leadership, that we all have the ability to work with, some of them which are sitting out here this evening, make it easier for us to do our jobs. We don't really know how good we've gotten in Smyrna when you think about the affordability and the quality of life and the things that we all get to share here and live here and enjoy because of the people that do the job. Because of those people, they were out there having lunch with us the other day, all the employees. So very grateful to all of them. To Jenny, please pass along our condolences to the loss of her father and the upcoming surgery of her husband, and Christine as well. Tom's still here, and I'm glad he is. Tom's with Crylike, and as many of you know, I'm in the real estate field and industry as well, and Tom and I have known each other, gosh, for probably twenty-five, thirty years, haven't we, Tom? And they always step up. Crylike just always steps up and gets behind our community and does a wonderful job, and there's proof in it, the fact that they keep winning this cup over and over and over. And there's proof in it, the fact that they keep winning this cup over and over and over. They're hard to beat. They're on a throne of people that are hard to beat. And they don't mind being beat. They'd probably welcome it because that would benefit the town. And that's their heart. The lot of drives they do, I get the, I get the, the joy of getting to work with, with Tom and a lot of his people. They're just a class outfit, and I just want to make sure they know that. Lana left, and if you would, please let her know that we, as a council, many of us know Fay Hubbard. And, you know, Dr. Hubbard at Life Point Church passed away many years ago. Fay's not in good health anymore, and she's been in some care for a good while now. So if you would, just let her know, we want to continue to lift up. Fay's a sweet lady. I know her like my own mama. And, and she is just a dear heart to the town of Smyrna. If you've ever been in town anywhere, run into Fay Hubbard, you'll never forget her. So I just wanted to lift her up in prayer tonight and just make sure that Lana knows that we're going to, we're going to blanket that family in prayer for Ms. Hubbard, too. Okay? That's all I have.
Couple of items. First of all, don't forget our 2020 Top Gun Night Run. The date of the run is scheduled for Friday, May the 29th at 8:00 PM. Registration is now open at townofsmyrna.org backslash Top Gun Night Run. And we are really excited. It sold out last year, and I expect that it will sell out again this year. Couple of items on mine. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. We all have a lot to be thankful for here in the town of Smyrna. Christmas parade, what a wonderful experience. I think sometimes we forget about all of our town employees that helped to put the parade on so all of us can have a great time. So for all of our town employees, the volunteers that helped to make last Sunday possible, thank you for that. We had a legislative breakfast this past week. We met with our county legislators, and we met with our state legislators. And we just wanted them to know exactly what we have going on here in the town of Smyrna, and what we can do to work together to make the town of Smyrna a better place, Rutherford County a better place for all of us. So thank you for, to Brian for setting that up, and thank you to all of the legislators who came in for that meeting. Brian and I attended the Stoll Ceremony at MTSU, and it is open to the public. And if you ever get an opportunity to attend that event, I highly recommend it. It is those from the military that are graduating from MTSU. And we've got great people that are graduating and going to be a part of our community. So that's a worthy event to attend. Employee luncheon, we have over 500 employees, and we have one day in which we all get together and break bread. And we have milestones, starting at five-year, this year ending at 30-year. And how many did we have in the 30-year category? Is it six or eight?
Six, I believe, six.
Six. The number of years of experience just in those milestone years was unbelievable. We've got people, I think, both chiefs had 30 years, correct? Is that right?
That's right.
So...
69 people represented this year receiving service awards, represented 1,035 years of experience for our town in those 69 people.
So pretty impressive. And I think it also says a lot about our town and the commitment of our employees to their jobs and to this community. So to our employees, thank you. We appreciate the job that you do every day. Mike, good job on Front Street Christmas. It was a lot of fun. And the carriage rides, it could not have been a better night. Temperature-wise, it was just cool enough to do some more's and hot chocolate and cider, and Santa was there, and Britt was pleading his case to Santa that, you know, he's been good. I let Santa know what was the truth.
I think they were pleading for you.
No, no, never.
I overheard the conversation.
Chris is in our control room tonight. Chris, I just want to thank you and Stewart's Creek TV for what you did to make the parade possible. It was exciting, and the students today were really excited to be a part of it, and they are so excited for next year. The last thing I want to do, my cousin Rui is in from Seattle, Washington. That is my dad's oldest brother's child. And so she's actually watching tonight. She'd even sent me, she sent me a couple of pictures of the crowning tonight.
Your mom sent me a couple of pictures of the crowning.
Did she? Good. Well, I will tell you, Mom, Mom and Rui both helped on the sash. Mom created the bow and the...
I could tell there was some time and effort put into that.
There was, and, and let me tell you, last night at 10:30, Leann and I were back and forth of her making the sash. So it was a family affair with the sash.
They're trying to finish off the beanie weenie.
Mama saved those. Mama loves the beanie weenie. So Mama did save the beanie weenies.